Recording in progress.
So, we'll just continue making the discussion with George. So, right, yeah, no, I think he has a job description, so it's really.
But I want it refined.
We did refine it since.
I think I might have that.
Oh, we find, we find it quite good.
Because he does a lot of support things for you that I think we need to look at. It's gonna be tough to find someone with that skill.
Maybe somebody that's already employed by me.
I'm going to talk.
No. And but we have to get, you know, of course, we're gonna pay to make a difference for him. Depending what we wanna do. I mean, he's got his, he plows for us already, he'll have to get a CDL if he's driving a smaller truck, but he's willing to come to work for us if we can get him up and a half or use a little bit.
Why don't you send me the job, send us the job description?
Actually, maybe you could put together a resume.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
He's a stormwater background too, so.
But I really think you need somebody that has the computer skills too.
Oh, yeah.
This is not a sl- you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Can help you do the budgets, help you do the numbers, the things that you need.
I'm not sleeping on one, I think I need to put it out and get it, you know.
Yeah, I think you brought it out, see what happened.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Ed gave me a job description.
Did, but we added the computer skills, we added stormwater to that because, you know, it follows that part of it.
So, why would he be stormwater?
Well, Ed was actually gonna be, we were gonna actually put Ed into stormwater because of we, you know, because his computer skills and stuff, a lot, you know, he's, he does big dispatches and all that stuff now, and we just wanna get that, you know, hem ability to get to the meetings and stuff more, so.
So, not necessarily, so, not necessarily because it was related to the position, but more so someone who needed to have ownership?
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, it's, they're putting more and more stormwater on us since the position, I mean, when I retired, it was the hand arm, basically. You know, they were telling me to be, you know, I'm gonna be getting into, I mean, budgets and stuff, I've worked through that.
Yeah.
But it's, I was doing, you know, all the stormwater, attending all the stormwater meetings and all that stuff, it decided to get, you know, taken away from the position, you know, and trying to get things done, I mean, two people, three people, you're not getting a lot done, you know, so that's why we tried to Caroline was talking about putting Ed, and that's when she actually, putting Ed actually brought up the possibility that he wasn't gonna be here. So, we never, we never pushed that issue. So, we're hoping that, you know, we can get somebody with stormwater knowledge into the position if the thing needs to happen, so.
Well, let's do a review, send it, send it to us and we'll sit down.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll have him get the.
And it is a high priority, just so you know.
Yeah, really.
I'm wondering if maybe you should have Paul kind of read until that's filled, just something I was thinking about.
Absolutely, I'm concerned about that.
Okay, we can talk about that.
We can have him come into, oh, I mean, you still have to tell Ford.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. We have a meeting Monday, right?
Same thing, I didn't get that. I didn't get an email about that.
Ed?
That's correct. Oh, look, sorry, I got it, okay. Some of the CNN ones, yes, oh, yeah.
Can you clarify for the record what you're talking about?
Oh, sure.
Oh, Ed sent a letter, oh, I'm sorry. Ed Walsh resigned from the town, he has a new job offer, and he sent us a letter this morning saying that he was resigning in two weeks. Or now, effective now, but two weeks out. And we're looking to, we need to replace him. I'll do this, so.
Okay, a couple more minutes and then I think we'll probably have to adjourn. Apologies, you guys, I don't know what happened with Paul, but, well, the other thing is, is Paul can watch the meeting, and then, you know, he can bring his comments to the next meeting.
Doesn't matter, maybe we can tell me the way.
It's, it's really up to these guys as well, because they can help for us.
But, but the problem is if he brings his comments, they'll have to be back for that too, anyway, right?
Potentially.
I, I think it'd be better if he just showed up.
That would be ideal.
Well, let's.
If you magic wand, right? Send the broom out.
Oh, he's on his way. He just got open work, he said, working comments.
So, if you could do that, that'd be great.
And, and the, the job description.
Did you have a chance to read the newsletter?
Apologize, I'll do it.
That's all right.
Yes, we can.
But it does have to be done by then, the next week.
I haven't even seen it.
I sent it maybe mid-afternoon.
All right.
I'll wait till four. That position needs to be split between both departments, I think, as far as salaries go too, because it involves a lot of the transfer station stuff.
What was the date on that timing? Ed's due, the plan?
Well, actually, tomorrow, but, no, next week, we'll be working on it next week.
Oh, okay.
I need it at the printers by the first of the month, which is the week for Monday.
Okay, so, what you're looking for, I mean, I have a background, but it's content news select board?
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't send you my year, right? You got mine yet?
No.
Sorry, I'll try.
And I don't have Ed's yet either.
Yeah, we talked about the other day.
Tell him.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll try to get it.
Okay, and I don't have anything for fire either.
What does this mean?
The fall newsletter.
Yeah, it's more busy. So many hours in a day.
If you want, you can just.
We're actually just gonna give you.
Just write a few ideas down as to what we need to cover.
Yeah, I was gonna make a big want ad, you can put that in.
What?
A big want ad?
Help wanted.
Self wanted.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, too, so Plough drivers on here, too, just, just stir up the pot a little.
Well, let's do that, let's do a big help wanted ad.
Yeah.
Firefighters.
Everybody gets attacked too.
But can you give specific as to that?
Yeah, maybe somebody in town might be interested in blowing some.
If you get one, it's positive.
Because we know what's gonna happen.
It's a good idea.
Well, we're waiting, can you ask some questions last night about the radials?
Yes.
And I went back and researched that for you.
Yeah.
So, the funding provided for eleven handheld radios.
Okay.
And four radios that went into the truck.
Yeah.
So, with what we've purchased this year, we still have twelve to replace.
So, let me ask you about, what's the total you have to replace?
So, I'm just counting all of the positions, so basically every position on each apparatus has to have a radio assigned to it, plus the chief officers. So, five, six is eleven. Number four, fifteen, seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven radios. Plus, each apparatus has a radio in it as well, plus the base station that is actually in the station.
So, how many people do you typically have at an event that would require, I mean, do you usually have fifteen people at an event that require radios at the same time?
So, the, the challenge is actually from the emergency side. So, each radio is programmed with the location of who has that radio. So, if they press their emergency alert button, it says engine two, tail two. So that in an emergency, we know who we're looking for. So, you can't just patch radios from one to the next, because you don't.
Sorry, I'm late.
Who the personnel is lost that's hit their emergency alert?
Yeah.
If you just shuffle radios around. You didn't need to, so most, like, full-time departments.
Should we have to reconfigure them?
So, when we press the emergency alert button on the radio.
Yeah.
Dover dispatch gets an alert that says this specific radio just hit their emergency alert. So, full-time departments assign it to the actual person. So, if I'm on Dover and I hit my emergency alert, it says, you know, Sean Quentin. They know who they're looking for. We do it by the apparatus. So, it says, you know, engine two, this position, so we know who's looking, because that position could be a different person every time, and you know, we can't buy radios for everybody in the department.
So, there's twenty-seven positions?
There's twenty-seven seats on the various apparatus, plus the chiefs.
And how many radios on an apparatus?
So, engine one has five seats, so it has five radios. Engine two has six seats, so it has six radios. The car has four seats, it has four radios, and utility two, forest three, five, tank truck two.
Yeah, I think we need to understand that a little better, but now it's probably not, let's continue the conversation.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer your specific question.
Welcome, Paul.
Thanks, sorry for running late. It's gonna catch up all week.
Yeah, okay.
Face is all right?
Yeah.
Got to just check.
That's bad, huh?
No.
So, also, George.
We started off by talking about Ed Walsh resigning.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
I talked to him this morning, I said, there's no way we're gonna get him to stay, because he's got a job in his own town, four minutes from his house, with an increase.
Yeah, I figured that. I mean, so it sounds good, so.
And you'd agree.
You go all the way with that now.
So, I've asked George to get him to refine the job description that he has. And put what I'd like to see as computer skills in there too, because I know that George needs assistance with that. And have Ed come in to present to us what he thinks about the job, and let's put it out, figure out what we're doing.
All right, for the same salary that it was.
Well, we probably need to do a little bit of research.
Yeah.
We probably need to do some.
So, prior to, you're just asking a question, I'm not putting it over Bernard or George, but prior to George and Ed, it was just highway, it was number transfer, was it ever a full-time transfer system?
This one, yeah.
When I started, there was none of this.
Recycling?
Recycling, none of this other stuff. Ed's and I worked together to get the comp, the bailer in, et cetera. Building, recycling buildings, and then we went from there. Ed works big with N R R, N R. Northeast.
Recovery.
Recovery, yeah. Trying to get the best prices we can on anything we recycle, it's, that job is almost a full-time job, the recycling center. So, we broke away, when we started getting into it, we made Ed the manager of the transfer station, because he can spend more time trying to get savings for us.
And generate revenue.
And generate revenue. That's why the position, we made a transfer station manager at the time.
And then, at the time, there was a time when we were making, actually making money on recyclables.
We are still making money.
We were making a really good amount of recyclables.
Right now, we're making half, we're using money on recycling.
Good.
So.
It was like fifty-six thousand, wasn't it, last time I heard?
Something like that.
I thought it was pretty close.
So, by doing that, of course, Ed spent a lot of time doing transfer station stuff. In the work week, you know, even though it's, you know, he's working for us, that's why I brought up, you know, tonight, if that position was split pay-wise, between both departments, it would look like it's, you know, and that's again, it's just a money thing, you know, it's just a number on the, on the paper. Looking at that position today, and across the state, and it's the ones they asked, and you said the same thing for that position. You're looking at a twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-six dollar pay scale for that position. Because of all the, you know, what, what has to happen in, you know, making sure you, to try to make money for the town. So, Ed did not leave for money, that position came looking for him, I mean, being a selectman, he saw the position open up, and he said, you know, he started thinking about what's what, and they made the price, he stayed out of that discussion the whole time it was going on up there. And he applied for the position, and he got it, but he's, you know, money, money wasn't gonna change his mind, no matter what, I mean, I got five minutes home, and, you know.
Got the.
Commute and all that stuff, and.
All right, do you wanna start, we wanna start with George's presentation, Jack?
Sure, it's fine.
Or, actually, not presentation, but, so, do you wanna kind of talk about why we asked him to come down?
Yeah, we've asked you to come to talk about your salary, what you're talking about, overtime, and, you know, and hours and all that stuff, so that everybody understands.
Okay. The role agent position here is, I believe the town, when they hired me, believes it's like a highway director, which, it's definitely about that same type of position. Highway director has an office, sits in his office, and dedicates people to do the job. I started here October seventeenth of twenty-seventeen. The total position was gonna be for fifty-five thousand dollars. When I asked for three weeks vacation, that position went to fifty-two thousand dollars, so I in, in sense paid my own vacation ad here, and took a cut with no overtime. I understood the, the salary schedule, but then we got talking, and I says, you know, I'd worked a lot of weeks in excess of seventy hours that winter for the fifty-three thousand at the time. I was making about sixteen dollars an hour, where Ed was making twenty-four dollars an hour, because he was getting overtime. And plough drivers making twenty bucks an hour, another four dollars an hour more than I was, which I didn't feel was quite fair. Of course, I brought the subject up, and it was shot down at off, there was nothing, you know, overtime for the position. I offered to do the position for fifty hours at that salary, and get overtime after fifty hours. However, that was also shot down.
After fifty or the forty?
I would have done it after fifty, but I was shot down, because that's not on the table anymore.
What, what do you get paid now?
Right now, my salary is, oh, it.
It is fifty-five, six, ninety-three.
Yeah, so it comes out to, my hourly pay scale is twenty-six, seventy-seven for forty hours. It would be twenty-six, forty, uh, twenty-six, seventy-seven. That's what it come up to at forty hours. The average paid for working informant is, instead of, I'm using working informant versus director of highway departments, is about twenty-nine, fifty an hour.
Where did you get that number?
With overtime, I got, did a survey, I.
Got it?
I tried to get, I, I got it through the New Hampshire, and I couldn't get into New Hampshire, it was supposed to be.
On the state, it's the state website that we went to.
I got it from different, I went to New Hampshire U and H, and they, I got it from different towns, I didn't get nothing local, because there was seventy. So, I used the numbers that I had, given to me from them, which hourly positions, it averaged at twenty-nine, fifty. Salary positions were at sixty-two, five, two, seventy-five thousand. So, but that's, you know, with my position being as low as it is, is why I, you know, try to get up to somewhat more, you know, closer my constituents. I, I do have, you know, we are only two full-time employees, I was taught not to work more than forty hours. But to get the job done, you can't do that, you know, I mean, we plow snow for eighty hours in a week, but from home after forty, you know, we're taking away people from the, from the position. Uh, you know. And in the position, we, when I was starting, when I got hired, was to start doing more projects in-house, and we have been doing that. First year, they gave you a thousand dollar increase for performance, because, you know, we started doing projects and getting involved in more on the outside, you know, doing the projects that I would, I would should be doing, it's not a case of plowing snow in the winter and doing nothing in the summertime. There's plenty of things to do, plenty of things that shouldn't have been done, that haven't been apparently, so what I've been told. We found projects that did get a little costly when, when we had roads rebuilt, and we found, you know, ways of saving money on them projects also, by doing the shoulder work ourselves, and just doing the shoulder works, we saved fifteen thousand dollars in each project, doing the work in-house, so I'm, I feel that I contributed my part to the town, and I'm just trying to get a little bit more, you know, to recoup some of, you know, some hourly pay. So, and before I can say, other than the fact that, you know, with the market out there right now, it's, I'm not threatening anybody, I don't have any intention of going anywhere, I love what I do. So, I mean, I'm just asking for a little, you know, a little bit more compensation for whatever.
So, George, you sent an email that kind of outlined a couple options.
Yeah.
Um, can you go over those for us?
George, are you looking, are you looking for, you're looking for an increase in your salary, right?
Yeah, well, actually, I would prefer going hourly. Because, you know, I mean.
So.
Because the position.
So, here's where I have a little concern about that, you know, you go hourly, and I understand in the winter, you're gonna have some plowing, you're gonna have a lot of plowing. There's times during the year where, like, you know, April, March, that type of year, so that don't, I don't know if you, you know, offsets it for the hours there, for not as much work being done, as much work to be done.
There's always forty hours a week worth of work to do in this town. I mean, there's, we play catch-up, you know, we try to fix the infrastructures, but we can't, whereas, you know, we, we do stuff in the town hall, we fix things, you know. There's always something to do, we're not just sitting around doing nothing, we're finding, you know, we find things to do, whether it be at the transfer station, trying to keep stuff cleaned out, and, you know, we're always finding things to do. Very seldom you can see us just sitting around doing nothing, I mean, we've had times where people come in to meet with us and stuff like that, and, but I try my best to get as much done in the day or a week if we can, so, you know, if you're concerned about what we do, then maybe it's time to let me go succeed, but we don't.
Well, I have time to see what you guys are doing stuff, and, and I'm not saying that you guys don't stay, stay busy, but I'm saying there's times, times during, so times during the course of the year, that it may not be, you know, forty hours worth of, forty hours of work to do every single, where it makes up in the summer and the winter, that's kinda what we have, I mean, April's the perfect month.
Locally, yeah, but that's the perfect time for us to take vacation, too.
Who wants to take vacation in April?
I have. It's a good time to cruise, but not right now.
So, what George had submitted with this budget narrative was, so an increase from fifty-five, six, ninety-three to sixty thousand, or thirty dollars an hour from twenty-six, seventy-seven, plus overtime after fifty hours, or make it an hourly position?
That's it. So, the salary was sixty, basically sixty thousand five hundred bucks?
That's reasonable, right?
Original, yeah.
What's your original?
Well, when I first put that in, I mean, it's, I, I, I'm willing to work, I just, you know, I'd like to get compensated for the volume I was.
Let's see, so, I think, oh, I think I looked at this, George, you said that made it an increase in the line item of sixty-seven, oh, seven?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Actually. Yeah, actually, the math's not quite right, so if you go, if it goes to sixty thousand, that's twenty-eight, eighty-four an hour.
Right, and.
But, I mean, your salary, and that's, you don't really talk about hourly rate on your salary. So, am I getting an increase from between fifty-five, six, ninety-three? Yeah, so, it's an increase from fifty-five, six, ninety-three to sixty thousand is four thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, not six thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. So, it's less of an increase than you mentioned here.
And I, I mean, the last, since I've been here, every budget I made, turned in forty, forty-plus thousand dollars back into the system, we haven't used it. So, I know there's, you know, there was money available to increase things, but, again, you know.
I don't see that not feasible, George, but I'm just speaking from me right now, not.
You don't think what?
I see that as being feasible. I mean, it's a big, it's a big jump, but, you know, he hasn't been compensated for a while, and probably what, I don't wanna say expect, but hope that, you know, he's gonna be able to help out with whoever takes over for the transfer at first, helping them out, getting on board and stuff.
Absolutely.
What about the overtime?
But, I don't know that you can, you can't earn overtime. Yeah, I don't think you can earn overtime when you're a salary position, non-exempt.
I'm pretty sure you can.
I was talking about cocaine.
The salary.
Six thousand, yeah. And George just seems like he's happy with that, and I don't see that shit, but.
Yeah, I think you're either non-exempt or exempt, and I think there's, or, like, you can ask Michelle Small, because she works for the Department of Labor, but, and I don't mind even sending an email, I'm pretty sure that you can't do both. You might be able to get comp time, but.
Okay, well, we'll get back, we'll get on the comp time issue. They don't like to have a comp time. They wanted to have the comp time within the first, within the paid period, I was usually working the extra hour, we call it, it doesn't work that way. You know, I mean, I was told, if you use your comp time in the pay, it don't work that way. You know, they would have a, it seemed a lot about comp time, you know, because it was no real comp time now.
No, I'm just saying, I think that may be legal, but.
I don't know how it works on state level, I know there's different people I work with that are, depending on what their salary is, they'll work, like, up to fifty hours, and the pay from forty to fifty will be like straight time. I don't know how that works, actually.
So, so, Paul, I mean, Paul, do you wanna make that motion?
I mean, if we do it with this, if we do it with, you know, go to an hourly position too, I mean, I don't care which way we do this, it's just, you know, again, mostly a working informant are an hourly position. a working foreman, uh, in hourly position, in most towns around here. The directors are the ones that are salary positions.
Um, so, maybe we don't recognize, you know?
No.
Because it's, I would like to try to find a little bit of market data as well, um, to see, and see how it's handled.
See, that's why I said, I tried to get that through the municipal association, which they have it available.
We, we, we'll look at that one.
Chuck couldn't get me into it, and, uh, then, uh, well, Andrew, he could have got me a two- to three- day, he couldn't want to bother with that this week, so.
Yeah.
But I was trying to get that.
I made a new.
You know, I, I got some, some data from different towns, but it's, you know, it's not the official state data sheet that's there.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is, I, again, I have to work on what the state says, but I think your position is technically.
I don't know that we wanna, we wanna go towards the comp time option at this point, because you kind of then set a precedent, you're gonna have to deal with the cost of the department.
Right, but if the position is a certain position, like highway director, or highway commissioner, whatever, if the town wants to, that it's probably dictated, that's a salary-type job, as opposed to what you're saying, you, you believe you are, it's like...
Well, I'm just saying it.
Right, like, there's gonna be all diff, there's gonna be a huge difference between, like, the talent, say you can take Dover.
Right.
Right, you know, they probably have a highway director with a good salary, and three or four people underneath them that do it.
Which one do you want to just?
I know, and I'm just saying, he's saying he'd be the next level under the highway director of a town like that.
Right.
I think, I didn't even put words in there.
No, but, no, that's exactly what, I mean, because of the size of our department, I have to work with the crew, so I, you know.
Right.
That makes it a whole different ballgame, it's not like I'm just sitting at a desk all day, directing the foreman to do what he's doing and stuff like that, it, it.
Is that how that works?
You're a working manager.
Yeah.
So, all right, so, so we'll do a little research and, um, and contemplate that. I, I personally, like, I think I would consider this, the salary, but I probably wouldn't do anything with overtime or comp time.
I, I agree, I understand that, but we should also see what the, if there is a certain regulation for the position, it's just a title anyway, it doesn't have to be a, you know.
Titles aren't worth anything.
No, I mean, it's, you know, I, I'm just trying to make it fair, I mean, it's, because, you know, there's quite a difference in pay, that, you know, when the other guy's getting overtime and I'm just, it's.
No, I agree, no, I think, and, yeah, I have to agree.
So, we'll look at that, we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
And we'll send you an email to get in in here, and I know it can't be a Wednesday night.
Okay, oh, yes, he had to quit.
Oh, he has, he left the board, he left the select board?
Well, I'd say, George, is, um, I don't want, again, I would say we probably would probably reasonable sixty thousand if it's time what you do, and what needs to be done for the town.
I, you know, I, I, I just think that, you know, the position, and, and, you know, with the other position, and I don't really want to talk about getting that, but, you know, we want to have it and bring the job description, and it's fine, we can do that.
Yeah, I would just like to kind of review it while he's still here.
Yeah.
Can you kind of go through that?
Yeah, I'll go with it.
Okay, so we'll try and make it, we'll look at our schedules, see if we can get rid of that.
We've got money, nice.
We'll, we'll send something back.
You have one schedule for Monday night, right?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Okay, thanks, George.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, George.
I think George.
Yeah.
Gee.
Sir.
Your day. I asked you to come in and talk about the EMD.
I'm sharing this with him.
Right, that's what I was telling you.
EMD, we can go over EMD. I tried to count some notes from EMD, some of the responsibilities that they have, I didn't make a slide, I didn't make a presentation, I wrote down a dozen things that I'm responsible or I keep an eye on, so, so we're gonna, you even have, we had some discussion about this last night. Has everybody read the contract for the, what the town provides and what they're asked to do for the, with York Ambulance?
Yes.
Have you guys seen them?
I'm ready.
Okay, and there was changes that were in there with, uh, that I had submitted, because there was some discrepancies that were happening, not on a regular basis, but, and not that there was going to be some liability issues if we had not cleaned some of those up. So, that's why some of those are in there now, basically the position, it oversees that contract, keeps an eye on, makes sure it's balanced, makes sure they meet the responsibilities that the town's asking them to provide. Um, basically, every EMS call that comes into town, we don't go to all of them, they average, oh, I don't know, twenty-five to thirty in a month, if not more, that's on the low end, fire department probably goes to a third of those. Um, we basically review every one that we go to, um, for multiple reasons. One, make sure compliant to the contract, two, to make sure that the hospital needs are met, and all the EMS are, that the, are crossed and dotted, so that we don't leave anything up, so checking on all that stuff. Um, I have contact with, her name's Kim Tucker, she's one of the, not the directors, but she's the next one down in York, she sends me all the information on a monthly basis so that I can review the calls that they come in on, because they come in calls that are transportable and non-transportable, so they may come in fifteen times and not even do anything more than patient contract and contact, and then they head off, they return in their quarters. So, and then there's the other ones that are, what have we gone through this week, Sean? We've been to cardiac arrests and ODs, and those require us to go assist them. And again, as I said, we review all that stuff when we're done, the state requires a medical report on every EMS call generated by the ambulance, TENSIS report, but they need to have our information to go on to that report, so there's every feedback, legal al, legalities and whatnot, all the information is laid out there, so we make sure that's complete. Uh, I also have contact on a regular basis with Gene, I don't remember his last name again, do you remember?
Strick.
Strick. He is the actual operations manager in South Burke, where they house their ambulances. So, uh, Gene is, uh, he's been very helpful to us, uh, he helps us with our training, he's very good on calls, we've made some, uh, adaptations to how we respond through what he sees when he leaves, because there's, there's a bit of a, I don't wanna use the word breakdown, but there's a, there's some flaws in the system as far as when the calls come into Sanford, because they're dispatched by Sanford, they're not always classified as a proper level of treatment needed, so, they know it, so they know, and they, actually, they know a lot of patients we have in town, because it's repeated, uh, going to the same folks, so Gene will just say, start fire department, he knows he's gonna need our help, so that we go. Um, they're supposed to be categorized by Sanford, it doesn't always happen, Dover's our dispatch, they don't have anything on the medical and other things, echoes from Sanford, then it comes back around through us. So, with Gene, he's able to help us make sure that we get to what we need to go to, and as soon as he leaves his station, he'll ask if fire's started, if it's not, he immediately dials up Dover Dispatch and gets us dispatched.
So, who do you send, do you just send it, the ambulance truck, or, I, who do you send from Yerbrooke? Do you send a fire truck?
Yeah, usually we'll send a fire, ten, three or four guys on an engine, because the kind of thing, the more, the better. I mean, uh, I've explained numerous times when we go to fires, we need a certain amount of folks that do fire stuff, you need a certain amount of folks to do medical aid stuff. If you're gonna go to a cardiac arrest, it's gonna develop into CPR or something, you need about five or six people to take care of that, so this person can have the best point of survival, they show up with two. So, if we can show up with two or three or four, it's not only the fact that we may be in the back helping them out, we may end up being a driver to get to the hospital, because he may not be needing to, or whatnot, so there's different roles that we're gonna fill to help the ambulance service when they come into town. Gene has also been very helpful with, um, he's big on training, we're big on training, it's the one thing that you gotta do to make everything work, is to constantly be doing repetitive, uh, actions, so that everybody becomes confident with each other. He wants to bring his folks over so they know us, we want us to know them, so we get on these scenes, a lot of times, it's just eye contact, and you know what somebody needs, because we've worked so hard. Um, they've got brand-new ambulances, which I still want you people to come and see, so that we can understand where the equipment is, so you don't have somebody looking through five doors to find one piece of equipment, and that bothers the hell out of me when somebody does that, but at least we have a working knowledge of where it is, get the equipment, then get it into, uh, wherever the scene is, whatever we're doing. So, the training is a big asset, that aspect of that. We try to do it monthly, the, uh, he's on on Monday nights, Monday night is our work and training night, so we coordinate that, so that we can come in and get that stuff taken care of. Uh, I also, uh, liaison between the state, their needs, state Region Three, Seacoast EMS, picking up all their emails, all the information that they have, on things that are changing, and updates and whatnot, so I keep an eye on all of that stuff. Uh, Sean is a great help, he helps organize, we do the same thing to the ambulances, if we're doing CPR classes, uh, first responder classes, because we need to have our people have that and do recertification, Sean does the teaching on that kind of stuff, with Gene and the ambulances come over and helping us, so that's another aspect that we need to keep our people certified. We've got nine EMTs, one, two paramedics now, one just came on, so, you know Nick, you know Nick, I know Nick.
Mark, before you took on the ambulance contract, who's taking care of that?
Me, really?
Somebody had to sign it and draft it.
Well, somebody signed it and drafted, but nobody oversaw it.
But, um, so, do you know who signed and drafted it?
It's always in the select board.
It's always in the select board.
So, the select board oversaw that?
But, but it was money going out, but nobody watching it.
Right. Exactly, it was usually thirty-two, I wanna say not thirty-six or thirty-seven, because it's creeped up, it's been on a two- and three-year basis that they've been running the contract, but yes, it was initiated by the select board years ago.
So, this contract is good for three years, is it?
I think over the second year, I think it's maybe the last year, right now, that we're in.
And is there a description of the responsibilities that come with that contract?
It's in the contract.
No, I mean, for main, main thing, like, the person, so if something happens to you, is there?
I'm the contact person for the town now, and after that.
Is there somebody who would know what to be done, like, is there, is, could it be transitioned if something happened to you?
Um, after my name is being the primary, it's your folks who's next, but if it was transferred from me, it had to go to that gentleman over there. Basically, just by change from me, ambulance to fire department, and he's more than a EMS qualified to handle that.
Are you referring, like, if he came, for some reason, he came and?
He got hit by a bus, yeah, he got hit by a bus, you know, um.
Yeah, I got you.
Who would assume those responsibilities, and is there a description of that?
I like to say one in the middle box, you know, one in the middle box, and just ceiling.
That's right, yeah.
It sounds better.
So, so, it's outlined in that contract, so if you look at the contract, it talks about the reports that they provide on the, on the routine basis, monthly basis, all of that is in that contract?
Yeah.
Um, beyond that, just the liaison, all of the EMS stuff that we do, it is partly in our SOPs, SOGs, and partly in the state requirements.
Okay.
So, it would be a single document that you could look at, because the state says, you know, for a non-transporting agency, you must do X, Y, and Z, and that, that's a state law or state statute, I guess it would be, and then we have SOP and SOGs on how we interact, and the different license levels and all of that.
Um, but, so, but all of the, the reporting responsibilities that you talked about, um, the select board formally did that?
No, no, it all went through.
So, we were in violation of some, some terms of contract?
Well, it was taken care of through the ambulances themselves, and what the fire department needed, it wasn't so much that the select board had to take care of all that stuff, it kinda fell down to that next level, and we just picked up the pieces and ran with it. Um, because we also have, uh, we work with WDH an awful lot, uh, we do liaison with them for their, because that's the main transport where York Ambulance takes all the patients, so we're in there quite a bit, so there's also the liaison with them, uh, same with training opportunities through the hospital that we're able to get to because of that. Um, I get the CPR class, the Seacoast Region Three is another one, but it's a lot the same way as what we do with fire, we've explained you over and over the amount of certifications and the checks and balances we need to do, the EMS is the same thing, uh, there's three or four different things that you are mandated to do and to take care of and report, and before.
And we haven't been doing that.
And before, it wasn't really watched.
Yeah.
No, it was done through the ambulance, and I never had any choice, we never really let tie in with the ambulance before, so, other than the reports that they would leave or send to the hospital, or send to their, um, documentation areas, we never really looked at those. Now, we're more involved in that stuff.
So, so we would get that information by reading, rereading, I'll say, rereading the contract, what, so what the gaps were with the last board would be defined by reading the contract?
So, so I think you get to look at it in two different ways, right? York Ambulance is a relatively new entity serving the town, so prior to that, South Burke Rescue, and South Burke Rescue's sole purpose was to provide medical care to South Burke and Rollinsford, they went out of business, basically, you know, there's not enough money coming in to support that, when they came out of it out of business, York Ambulance out of York, Maine, rather than saying, let's dissolve that functioning service, said, we wanna take them over and make them part of our umbrella. At the time, the town looked at York Ambulance, Stewart's Ambulance, and Dover Fire and Rescue for ambulance service to provide to the town, based on the proposals, York Ambulance out of South Burke was chosen. When the first contract was written, some of the stuff that we normally got from South Burke Rescue, because it was two entities, we were very close, a lot of the EMTs that were on the fire department were also on South Burke Rescue, that stuff kinda happened naturally, went away because York Ambulance out of York was kind of just managing it, and, you know, they viewed it just as an offset of a station, and didn't really have that relationship with us that we were accustomed to from South Burke Rescue.
Are they taking care of South Burke, too?
Yes, yep, they're housed in the South Burke Fire Station, and they have two days, day room there, everything, um, so when that first contract came, time for renewal, that's when we looked at it and said, okay, what are the things that we're missing, what are the things that we could be doing to provide better service, and, and that's the things that we added into the contract.
Yeah, so five or six different amendments to that that were added in the last contract. And part of the reason was, uh, when we got to deciding which contract they wanted to re-enter into, then all the entities came in, they gave a presentation, um, some of the deciding factors were, of course, Dover was just costly.
Dover was hard working hard.
What's that?
Dover was high.
Very high. Nature of the beast, because they're gonna provide twenty-four-hour paramedic service, which is highly expensive.
Can I, can I just say, uh, we have a whole budget to get through tonight, so maybe we should move on to EMD, and we'll reread the contract definitely, so we're good.
So, a quick question though, so, just out of curiosity, this was a conversation probably in the last board, there were some issues with York and dispatch in a time of, has that changed, has that gotten better, or that's still been an issue?
We've had some meetings with, with their dispatch, Sanford Dispatch, with Gene himself, we've sat over there with the supervisor at Sanford Dispatch Center and tried to work out some of those issues. Have they improved? Yes. Is there still room for improvement? Yes, but it has been addressed. We have addressed that, because we, we hear me all the time, it's only the biggest thing in the, is time, and every second counts, so, we're on top of those things as much as we can, so we're gonna address.
Let's just talk about the emergency man, if you could just give us a little bit about what you do and how many hours you spend in order, I, I know you've repeated this three times, so, I want these guys.
I thought we did, it's the last time we were all here. The EMD thing was, um, every time it was me, they had to have an emergency emergency director, uh, forever and ever and ever was Chief Dusha.
Right.
And I think that fell into his realm, because, uh, he was here.
And nobody wanted to do it.
And what?
Nobody else wanted to do it.
Okay, I'll give you that, I'll give you that one, yeah, and, but typically, if you look at the state statute, whenever there's an emergency of any kind of a large scope, it falls under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, of the local jurisdiction, or his designate, that's written right in state, state R S A's, so, not to be real.
That it is a fire chief?
It is a fire chief.
It can't be a police officer?
I'm sure it can, but it's written as a senior fire officer on control of that scene is the one that controls the emergency situation, that's state statute.
So, another violation for the town, so we're not?
I'm not calling it a violation, I'm just going by how they chose to operate it. I'm not going there. So, when, when, when the chief left, and the position was obviously vacant, so they obviously needed to. so they obviously needed to do something with it. This was back in June, June or July, whenever he retired. So the select board at that point, we had a discussion as we are now. And since they hadn't even had any discussions on what to do about replacing the chief yet, and they understood what the statutes were, they said, is it something that you're interested in? I says, if it needs to be done, I know where it falls, I understand the responsibilities. If it's something you wish me to take on, I'll take it on. So they voted and came to me. Now, you were talking about number of hours. I cannot assign a number of hours to a check because earlier in the summer, we had, what, two, three hurricanes that headed up this way?
Yeah.
You were required on a monthly basis as an EMD to sign in with the state. You get yourself logged in so that they know that somebody exists. And when they start having these emergencies, the state declares an operational emergency, you are inundated with information from them, from what's going to happen going on in the state, from weather people, from whatever that event is. So obviously I can't be there. Nobody can be there as much as the information is available, so it's available on your phone, available on a podcast. You can catch up and there's other systems that they alert you with, wake up, whether it be a tornado or something like that, or a flood. So that kind of comes and goes as far as the amount of hours, the amount of time that's going to be required to do that. We're turning into the snow season, it happens the same thing with snowstorms. They're going to give you that same information. They have a guideline on where they're going to activate their emergency management center. And a lot of this is more unavain to give you the resources you need to handle your situation. The state is not going to tell you anything to do. The state's going to say, well, this is available to you, this, this, and this. And they'll help you coordinate getting to, whether it be personnel, equipment, or information.
But do you have to fill out forms like during the month itself? Did he come down?
There can be forms to fill out. Basically it's done going through the computer, sign it into their website. Forms are filled out as you need, information, reimbursement, equipment, then it travels down to that. But at this point right now, it's more of a, just a monitoring stage because we haven't had any emergencies, anything weather wise. I would say probably eighty percent of this stuff is all weather related for the most part. Flooding, hurricanes, tornadoes, snowstorms. Those are the big things. But if we had an incident as we did twenty-five years ago with the train fell off the tracks over here at Rollins Crossing, there you go. We were on the borderline with something like that when we had the drowning a year ago for the boy in the same repulsor. Just because of the amount of personnel, the amount of resources that we needed, we could have used their ability to get us the equipment we need. They help us secure state police, mobile command posts, equipment that we needed just by tapping into their resource. So the emergency management director mission to me is basically something that, it's sitting there, it's available. You need to know how to operate it so you can jump into the equipment and the information you need on a, on a daily basis. I can't tell you how often, but I can tell you it's time consuming and it's on a regular basis.
All right, well, I'd like to make a proposal.
Hold on, I have a quick question. So just generally speaking, I just want you to feel, normally speaking, I'm asking a question, not. Normally speaking, is it usually the fire chief who is the emergency director and not the police chief, normally speaking?
I'm looking it up now.
And then the other question was, the other question is just kind of, a little hypothetical, but not so much, is you and both, both chiefs okay with you taking the role over? Or there's no high feelings for the police chief you taking it over? That you took it over because it was just kind of transferred to old Eden, I know a lot of saying that. I'm just making the assumption that Eden doesn't have no high feelings with you.
Nothing that I was.
You're okay with it?
I've actually had a couple of conversations with him about that.
Yeah.
You mean your rescue mission out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and he was actually very happy with it.
He wanted to see you.
Can I?
As Kim said.
Yeah, I just.
You must have had inside information in it.
Of course.
Uh huh. I, I, I've been thinking about this all night, actually. What I, what I was thinking is, what if we made this a separate line item, EMD? Pay a flat fee of like twenty-five hundred dollars for that. Give you a normal salary raise on top of that. So that's a separate line item, it's controlled by the, by the select board. And then, for example, if you retire, we have the option to either use, if Shawn's the fire chief or the police chief to do it. Because Shawn might be new being a police, but a fire chief, and we have somebody that's seasoned being a police chief. We make it a separate line item, we pay you a fee for that, and it covers both bases. And it keeps you a salary in range with what we're trying to do across the board.
Well, I understand that making it a separate line, it does give you more control for that.
Right.
So that you people have it for future reference versus future use. Now, I don't have a problem with just another line item.
What do you think about that?
So you actually have a line item, two line items for EMD right now? Twenty-four through twenty-seven are emergency management. There's a twenty-two, there are twenty thousand dollars in.
Oh, you mean in QuickBooks?
In, in the actual town budget.
In the operating budget, not, not in fire.
Not line twenty-four.
Two twenty-four, two twenty-seven.
Sorry. I thought you said twenty-four.
That's not another P D individual?
No, no, it's a separate, it's a separate entity.
An administrative?
Yeah, it's the, it's the FEMA, it's the FEMA and Homeland Security going.
Yeah, there you go.
See, I, I think we put it in there as a separate line item. It gives us the flexibility. Like I said, it's like, you take it over when Duchesne left, it's, gives us the flexibility to look at it.
Now, that line item is what, twenty?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? A lot of how that line item is.
Twenty-one hundred.
A lot of that, the way that is set up is, I think there is some salary that comes out of it because it's also there for reimbursement, for recouping. Say that there was someone in the town that had to spend some money in, right away to solve some, solve an issue. Once that money, so they would, they would use that money in that line item. Say fifteen grand for something, you had a flood, they had to take care of some people. So that when the money comes back to the town through reimbursement through FEMA or wherever it's going to come from, it would go back into that month. That's the way that was set up.
I don't, I don't know if it goes back into this line item.
No, it goes on the revenue side.
Well, either way, but it would be coming back in and you could put it back where you need it. But that's how it was set up.
Okay, so that's interesting because last, twenty twenty, and it was appropriate at twenty-one hundred dollars. It was expended at sixty-four thousand forty-five dollars.
In what year?
Twenty twenty.
Yep, that was because it was COVID. So, so that was the other big thing that we didn't talk about at the beginning of this year. We were on weekly calls for COVID. And that was all through the emergency management stuff. We had to provide all the names of all the firefighters, police officers for vaccination and do weekly status calls. But that was all of the equipment that the town acquired as part of COVID relief.
What, what is that?
So we got sanitizers, we got masks and.
So that, that line was expended on COVID resources and supplies?
And then the, all of the COVID funds that we got reimbursed went into the general fund, according to my understanding.
Yeah, because every, every firefighter got twelve hundred fifty dollars, as did P D. All EMS, all first responders, as part of the COVID relief bill. And that's, that was something that everybody was paid as a stipend. And that's for someone that is right there.
So this, so I can check with Chuck, but we could use that line, I mean just.
What do you think that?
I, I don't, I don't know why you're.
That way it gives us flexibility in the future if we need it and it's there. And it takes our salary range and keeps it in line.
I don't know, sure.
I think, I can think of one other thing. I'd like to get even more flexible and to make it a quarterly stipend.
So it matches like the select board?
Yeah, we get quarterly stipends, right?
Quarterly stipend on how the, how the fire department's compensated now.
Okay.
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah. So we just give it to you in quarters, right?
And then if something, if you retire or resign and Shawn becomes, you know, we haven't fully expended that fund either.
Right.
Okay.
No, I have a problem. What, what are we looking to put into the line?
Twenty-five hundred.
I said twenty-five hundred. So in essence, you, you're getting what you're looking for, it's just coming in a different direction.
Understood.
Actually, you're getting more than you're looking for.
Yeah.
Because, so, if you didn't, then you do five percent. Yeah.
If you have more, is that?
Just a little more, a little more. So that brings out, that would actually bring out to, um, eighteen to fifteen.
Yeah, you found that. So how, do we have to do anything on that?
Oh, well, we could make a motion to, to adjust the proposed budget for that.
That's what I'm making, I'll second that.
Actually, Jack should make the motion, it's his idea.
Yeah, make the motion, Jack, I'll second that.
I'd like to make the motion to create a line item or move it to a line item called.
Line two-two-three.
Line two-two-three?
To increase that by an additional twenty.
Twenty-five hundred dollars. Are we going to keep it the same name?
So, um, so let me clarify that, that would make that line forty-six hundred dollars. So it was proposed, um. Yes, yeah. So that would change line two-twenty to forty-six hundred dollars. Do you want to finish your motion, Jack, or are you still thinking?
No. So I'd like to move that over, that's it, to give to the chief. As a stipend or the EMD role?
Quarterly stipend.
Quarterly payments.
I'll second that.
Home pay?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's, I'm more than acceptable that. So just so, I want to make sure, I already accepted it, but forty-six hundred dollars, it still has twenty-five hundred in it, just in case.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, just in case, yes, we need it for what it's intended for.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure it's to the cap.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of clarifying questions, just so I. So on the fire department budget, we're going to just increase the chief's salary in line to five percent.
Seven fifty. Right.
And then the radio line that needed reduced by five thousand, are we keeping that reduction?
So now I'd say yes. I, I want to look at that more.
Let me see what the.
What I want to do is really, when we bring the new town administrator in, this is, again, my thoughts. I want to look at the use of maybe the Aqua Funds and see if there's anything in there that maybe we could utilize. I know we can use it for police, I know we can use it for water and sewer. I don't know whether we can use it for fire and maybe fill in some of these voids.
I agree, yeah.
I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't know those do yet.
I mean, I, but supposedly the man we're bringing in has some experience in this and I'd like to have a conversation with him.
I think it's a good idea.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And we really need to decide sooner than later what we're going to do with Aqua, because water and sewer, we'd like to take a very big chunk of it. So we want to look at fire and police, whose needs are much smaller first, I think.
Well, the other comment I just want to make on that, and it's, I guess to say in the bigger picture, you know, we allocate X amount, X amount of money for water and sewer. Water and sewer is a percentage of the town tax base. Whereas we allocate the money for fire, police, whatever, it's all taxed.
I agree.
I know you guys understand that, but I just want to clarify.
I think we can give a portion of it to them. You know, we can, one of the projects, either they presented to us.
Right.
And we went out and looked at it, but we had a meeting and we went out and looked at it. And we understand some of it, but I, I really want to understand more about it.
Yep, I do too, I understand that. I, I am, I mean, it raises a red flag about that pipe, but it doesn't, to me, like, raise a red flag of like, oh my God. Because it's been there for so long and it seems pretty unsolved. I would also feel a jump on it.
Yeah, well, I think our bigger concern was the heart court issue.
Yeah, that was more expensive too.
Way more expensive. And, you know, just, and she probably, just financially, I think it makes sense to use Aqua Funds for that project because it's a much more costly project, you know.
We need to have a discussion.
That's good.
And we, and we really need to understand more about the opera and the whole thing that Mike, when we bring him in, we can have a pretty straightforward conversation. Because apparently he's done some of this before.
Yeah, and I think, I want to reread the, you know, I saw John Lasker brought forward some information he found in it. So if, have you read it, Mark?
I've been poking through it, yeah.
That's the thing, that's showing you.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm looking at maybe we can see the radio stuff through that or something, it's something. And we agree on the flexibility.
Well, the summer, the summer.
So we're not hitting the budget, so.
We should all get a kind of copies of it, so we go through it.
I can read it.
Yeah, thanks. I like to, I don't want to say I'd like to read it, but it's important, but I do.
All right, great, thank you.
So just so I can get this straight before we're, we're done, I got just a couple of questions. So chief's line item salary now is fifteen. What's that going to go to?
Fifteen, seven, fifty.
Fifteen, seven, fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're going to add the twenty-five hundred.
Under the emergency homeland security line item. Yeah. Okay.
I guess my next question is, takes care of what we're talking about with the chief's salary and whatnot, it's going to have to multiply his fire salary. Do we get anywhere with that last thing?
When was it inspected right now?
Right now, everybody is, what we're talking about, Mark, right now, everybody is at five percent. And I personally, and I can't speak for everybody, feel like, I understand that we need to get to market, get closer to market. We don't necessarily know what market is. I appreciate you guys sent all of that information about the firefighters. At the same time, it's important that we take care of and consider the residents of the town that they can afford.
I totally understand that.
I mean, the challenge, one of the challenges we have too, if, if you look at the revenue reports, our revenue's down. You know, and that, that's a big element here. So we, we got to consider all of everything. So that's, we're probably doing like five percent is what we're saying right now.
Yeah, totally understand.
So revenue's down, I think about fifty thousand right now for this year. And then when I look at last year's revenue, it was about one point five million. The budget that Caroline left me for this year is proposed at one point two million, which is pretty significant. So we're trying to find a compromise.
Okay, appreciate that.
Anything else?
Although we can, can work for now. Well, I'm good with that, if you requested us, we'd make some comments.
Yeah, we're all, I think we are.
We are scheduled for Monday night, right? I got some things to bring in for you.
Yeah, regular meeting on Monday.
Yeah, you don't want to bother me that time.
I see you guys more than I see my wife.
It's the time of year, Jack.
It is.
Remember when it goes off later in the night, I expect to see you.
I have a record of the ones I've answered to.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, um, can you, can you help me to try to, uh, look at this a little back through what we talked about last year? Or did we feel comfortable with everything except for these two salary discussions and the rec director position?
Yeah, I want to talk about the rec director. I think, I think we need to provide some guidance to Celia. I mean, I think it's to what, because she's got to present in front of the budget committee next week. And, and, you know, at least we got to give her our thoughts on what we're thinking.
Yeah. I can email her.
Next Wednesday.
No, never, come in Monday? You're talking, doing it individually or?
No, no, well, I'm the rec, um, executioner, so I can read that to her. And I'll just, I'll put the board up, of course, and kind of summarize what we're thinking about, you know, the need for a better plan.
Right.
I actually responded, so Kelly Anderson kind of emailed.
I read it, I'm sorry.
You saw my response where I said, you know, we really feel it's important to have a good plan before we hire somebody to be a full position, right? And I, so I asked her if she would consider for me to talk to us and maybe help them with it because she has quite a bit of experience. I didn't get back to her yet, but I can read it.
And what did you guys saw coming in line about what? And what did you guys saw, come in blind, about what, how, what's the, has the school board given numbers for the budget?
Yeah, um, that came last night.
Last night, was it?
I forwarded, no, it's in email.
Okay, I, actually, I saw the email, come on, I'm gonna open the spreadsheet, yeah, but that was like, what, three o'clock, two o'clock today?
It was last night.
It was?
Yeah. Uh, as, well, the summary is, um, enrollments down.
On both schools.
Okay, so that means cost up.
Yeah, by about, probably fifteen students on both grade school and Marshwood, um, high, Marshwood, junior high, high. So we're down to, um, a total of two hundred and seventy-three students. And the budget is about five point nine-nine-two million dollars.
When she did the numbers, she reversed them, there's a hundred and thirty-eight at the middle and high, and one thirty-four at the grade.
So how much is the school budget going up?
Um, so, they, they haven't proposed that yet currently.
Sounds like it's gonna go up quite a bit.
They haven't proposed it, um, but currently, they were at five point nine-nine-two million. That was the budget she showed us yesterday, and that's what's in the email.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to think the budget is not gonna go up in the school.
And what is that, oh, what is, what is that over last year? Or over this year?
That's what, I, I guess. Are they giving back?
They are expecting to give, it was one ninety-five.
Cause there's less students who are paying X amount, and we're not paying so much.
For Marshwood, we're getting something, uh.
Well, we're not getting it back, we're just not paying tuition.
It's kinda like a hole in the credit card.
Right, yeah.
See, that bottom line though is gonna, I think, you know, if it was hypothetically speaking seventeen-five a student, and you get less students, then next year, it would be like eighteen-seventy-five a student.
I do remember.
I, I think it's like twenty-seven.
Well, I'm just thinking of those.
It's almost twenty-two.
It's twenty-two now.
There's nothing you can do about that, all you can consider is a tax impact, as it relates to the town, you know?
It's a huge part of it, as you know.
It did, yeah.
And then how, well, that hundred thousand dollars, did Chuck's email make sense of wanting to follow up on a little bit, my no pain?
Oh, um, so I did, so the Wentworth Douglas.
Coming out of that, yeah.
Um, it's not coming out of operating, um, or revenue, um, it is coming out, actually, I can read that.
Trust.
Source.
We have like two million dollars in funds, isn't it coming out of that? But it has nothing to do with the operating budgets, go ahead.
All right, so, um, so it basically says, um, they spoke to Tom Dumis and Paula. From an accounting standpoint, um, they're gonna, going to create liability in their accounting software for the total payment owed over three years. Three checks over those three years will be attributed to abatement overlay expense, and they'll create a general journal entry to offset the liability. So, um, we won't see those amounts in the budget, um, just in the balance sheet. Uh, let's see. So, it looks like, um, so no effect on the budget. And, okay, um, let me just see here. It does not appear that money, the money was set aside to cover the liability. The town has plenty of funds from which to draw to pay Wentworth Douglas Hospital. Um, you can find a list of the funds in the treasurer's office. As of the nine-thirty, the town has over two million dollars in its investment fund, plus over seven hundred thousand in an account from which the checks are drawn. Obviously, we wanna make sure that over the next two years, that eighty-two thousand dollars is available each October to cover those Wentworth Douglas abatements. Don't see an issue. Um, so, so Jack, we wanted to know, um, all right, so, well, before I get too far down this path, do we wanna go through this budget again?
What do we have a percentage right now, I was told one.
Well, let me, let me just highlight.
Oh, you had these back in, huh?
Um, I didn't. Actually, I had that original budget since, um, so Jack, the answer is.
Just a color to the file box, something like this.
Thank you. Oh, it's all separate.
Kinda, kinda hard to notice at night, but I came to, oh, I came to see Chuck, it was like, yeah, bright, stick that out.
They, they do such a good job breaking it up now, um.
They don't have drainage.
So.
Those file pots, though?
I was shocked, I've been wondering why the drainage didn't thrive.
Okay, all right, here's the, the budget, um, so the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget was five million eight-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand four-hundred-and-twelve. But the budget that, um, Aaron provided last night was five million two.
Sorry.
One, one second.
That's quite a bit down, she said five million two hundred.
So, their current budget, um, she said it was five, so. Five million nine-hundred-ninety-two thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars is what the budget was. So, thanks, right.
That's pretty close to that, those numbers are pretty close. So, the hundred thousand dollars, okay, it would've been, it's just basically for accounting, where, where it would've still been abated, they still wouldn't have paid that money.
It would've, right, if it was handled correctly.
Right, it's just.
The ratio's never paid, right?
Right, okay.
All right, um, so this budget, so the things we highlighted, um, were the five percent, um, if you wanted to try to plug.
No, go ahead, cause I, I, I mean.
And you guys have the.
Yeah, I, I have it right here, anyway. So you agree for five percent across the board, I agree with that.
But now, um, contingent upon having job descriptions and basic requirements of you. And then, um, so that was for executive office, town clerk, um, tax clerk.
T A doesn't tell.
The, um, so the planning, um, the, the one issue I had, and I, you know, I'm reluctant to say it, but, so for land use, um, support. So we found out that Sarah was already at sixteen-sixteen an hour. There was a time when we were on the budget committee, and, um, the select board said, you know, that all of the recording people, the secretaries, would have the same wage. But now I think we're kind of deviating from that, um, and so, that's my only concern, you know, is, is just the fluctuation, well, and then, um, who voted on this, who voted to increase it to sixteen-sixteen, when all the other secretaries, like, suddenly, I think it's like fifteen? So that's my concern about doing a five percent on that line. Because she's already over the other secretaries.
No, I, I follow what you're saying, and I think some of the arguments, cause she has to do work up front and stuff, but still, still now, do, our rate, and and part of its experience too, you know, no matter how long she's been doing it for, but. I think, I personally would agree with you that, I personally agree with you that if she is higher up than the other one, all the other ones, that we should, I don't wanna say freeze, but instead of a five percent, maybe a one percent, and continue with five percent for the other, I'm gonna take it.
Jack, do you have any input on that?
I don't, because I don't know enough about it.
So besides you, so, I'll try to see who else, um, is up for the.
The budget.
Budget committee.
And we don't know what that is either. And where that comes out of, for that matter.
And who does plan?
Oh, Sarah does plan, right, well, Sarah does planning zone.
Yeah. So we have three minutes, I guess?
At, at least three. Well, and then there's, well.
At town.
What's that?
At the deliberative, isn't someone hired for that as well?
Does, can't come out of the town clerk's budget.
Makes sense. Um, so that one, that one, um, you know, I have a, a little bit of reluctance about, because, you know, I just.
No, I agree. The, I don't remember, I don't remember the reason why.
Okay, you are.
The town administrator, there was a reason why, and I think part of it was just because she was in planning board stuff, and she was spending more time, like, maybe more registry stuff, or stuff like that, but.
So that was, um, like, so maybe it's a different position.
Who does she report to?
Um, planning board and zone board.
They don't, not really report to, not really us, I guess.
Probably us, yeah.
She was reporting to Caroline, I believe, before.
So maybe we need to have a conversation.
That's what I'm saying, is how, how do we get feedback, that's not.
Maybe her job is diff, different than just, you know, um, it, maybe it's more of a administrative assistant.
It may be, yeah, it may be researching plots and stuff like that, it's very possible.
Um, I can certainly, we can ask her to join us if you want.
What do we have, come in?
Um, is Monday okay?
Monday's fine.
Yeah, I think Monday's, we're, we're doing pretty well now, so I think Monday looks good.
Um, all right, so.
I think they have library meeting.
On Monday?
You guys don't want me taking that, trust me.
But she just has to be there for the whole thing. So.
She does, she's at the library.
Um, so town clerk, what was the adjustment, um, tax clerk, let's see here. And then, still open items are the health insurance, life insurance, et cetera.
Yeah, you don't know that till it comes in. About the, uh, state? The state, the state hasn't submitted tax yet.
Um, no.
No.
Oh, there was a question, right, we should've asked Mark, who was here, about, um, the fire station, um, second, uh, two meter thing, but I don't know if this much we can do, so that was another violation.
Can someone, I know Chuck can, I don't wanna say me, cause I probably won't get a chance to do it in the near future, but can someone follow up with the state? About, about, about how they got more of that tax, tax rate?
Would Chuck be able to do that?
Well.
Well, if they get back to us, so we're waiting to get, to hear back from them, so we've submitted everything that we need to submit.
Right, but sometimes I'm just wondering, you know, squeaky wheel, guess if you call a few times and ask, it may get their attention. Well, I, I just.
They do the cities and then the towns.
So you don't have, it just doesn't, you have no say, it's done what it's done, even if you try to, I don't mean push them, but, you know, try to get the information.
So the road agents is the one change, um, that we have to, um, we have to.
The big, the side.
Yeah.
Have you guys both been able to get into the website for that, have you set anything up for them?
I haven't, no, I haven't looked at it.
I did.
You can get into the website and get about seventy-five percent of information on it.
Yeah.
But if you, like, if you s, get on, and there's a little, little tab up here that says, uh, I don't remember what it says, but you click it to log on, it's like, it allows you for your email. Sends, it sends you a link with the email, and all you do is click it, and it gives you a, a dummy password you fill out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in it.
You have to do it within twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I'm in it.
Okay, so you got it, and you can get in it.
I can get in it.
Have you found all the information in it?
I, pardon?
Have you found, have you found?
Yeah, I have found it.
So what I'm finding is, what I haven't got yet, is there's two other modules, I have known the territory, but there's also one on planning. There's also one on, um, budgeting, which I'd like to get both of those books. I, I'll find out how to do that too, we should, actually, all free, we should.
We should all get.
I think you can get that information from the municipal association as to getting those books.
Yeah, that's why I got no, took no territory, but. I think there's a fee we, we, do you have, pop, pop ahead, if we pay like a fee every year from two, only, like, three grand, it's almost, I was like.
Is it that much?
I was seeing these the other day, I was reading.
Is that un, unlimited users, or is that?
Yeah, it's like, you know, so.
One.
Someone like Go, someone like Go would might pay him thirty thousand, cause they go by, you know, who pays them a little bit to the pot, so to speak.
Okay, um, so that, um, so with, um, if we move George to sixty thousand, it's eight percent increase on that line. Um, and then, um, it ends up being a three percent increase overall for highways, um, for fourteen thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars.
So George got, George will be, if we decide to agree with this, George will basically get an eight percent increase, right?
Yeah.
So if we give him a five percent increase, that would be.
So I just have that.
That would be about fifty-nine, right? Just, I'm just figuring the numbers, cause everybody got five percent.
No, it would be, a five percent increase is twenty-seven-eight-five, that brings him to fifty-eight-four-seventy-seven.
You know, the other thing, I'm just gonna throw this out there, I'm not saying now, I'm just saying somewhere in the future, there may be a situation where we may wanna think about having a position that, it's a full-time position that, I don't know, maybe it'd be too much, you know, just thinking out of the box, but that could do both. Highway and transfer.
That's what it was in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, it was with no help.
I, I agree with that, I think it is more, it's more complex now than it was, which is different.
Sure, so a friend of mine, Ms. Burt, does Burt work, and I think he does both, road and, um, transportation.
It's something I think about, um. I'm not saying George doesn't sit busy, but, I don't know, I'll, I'll leave it at that one.
But, and you know, well, I mean, I think you have to have the right person that can do both.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that, that's, that's my concern with where we are, because I don't think George can really do like, the budget, or
Right, right.
The computer stuff that we need, he, he doesn't have the skills, you know, and he'll admit it, I mean, he just doesn't have it. Dad's been a godsend to him.
Yeah.
So I, you know, quite frankly, I think, until we sort it out, maybe we do five percent. But we have to sort out, um, if we're going to fill that other position.
Yeah, okay, but I thought we kind of alluded that we were giving them that.
Okay.
Yeah, I sort of alluded to that, I, I was, and I was just very frank, and I was speaking for myself. Yeah, but I think we agreed to that. I feel we agreed to that.
Yeah, I do too.
I, I still, I still think we need to kind of sort out, um, whether it should be one position or two, you know?
Well, we can figure that out, but for right now, let's, let's assume we're gonna give them the sixty percent.
Has he stayed at the fifty-five for a while?
No, he started at fifty-two in twenty-eighteen, went to fifty-four in twenty-nineteen, went to fifty-five, six ninety-three in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, there's been adjustments. All right, so I put that in, um, and then, so that's all, let's see what's in there. So the transportation attendants, um, we talked about that.
How, how does this figure out, what is that salary, I'm sorry, Jack, what's that salary?
Uh, I haven't, I don't know, it's, um, let's see. That was eighteen-something an hour, it wasn't quite nineteen.
Oh, it, it is eighteen-something.
How many hours is allocated for?
I don't know.
All right, I was wondering if it's like twenty, twenty-five, thirty?
All right, so, um, I adjusted, I adjusted the, um.
I think he makes nineteen thousand, well, because he, I talked to him this morning, and he said he's gonna get like twenty-four-nine at, at the new place.
Yeah.
In five minutes, away from his house, so.
Yeah, so it isn't that much, yeah.
So the, the open items are, um, the rec director, so I made a note, um, I made a note to, to Celia.
Yeah, with the rec director is, I understand what their, their need is, what they're thinking of, but I kinda mentioned it a while ago, that they're kind of putting, behind the rec director first without any plan or anything, they're kind of putting the car in front of the horse.
Right.
And also, you need to, I, I think you need to look at it and say, does it need to be full-time, part-time, especially, you, you're looking at, the amount of kids is going down.
Yeah, they're looking at, I think part-time would be, if we're gonna, if we're gonna consider, we're gonna consider part-time.
That's all she needed, this was part-time, you know, so it's in that spreadsheet, but you guys. That's all she needs, was part-time data, um, so it's in that spreadsheet, she has hourly, proposed hourly rates, the number of hours. And so she broke it all down, that's in her presentation. Um, and it's still, I mean, it ends up being somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollar position.
See, that, that's not much for the tax payers of town if it, if it's. Well. It is a lot of money for the tax payers of town, I shouldn't say that, but if it's a program that can be well executed and used, it.
Can that be supported by private groups? You know, like getting companies to sponsor things and events?
Um, I would imagine, but I don't, I don't know if there's that much.
When they first.
Sponsorship around here.
When they first get the rec off, off the ground, Celia did a lot of going around and getting donations and grants and doing a lot of stuff to, to help bring in.
C and J used to pay for all the T-shirts.
That's what I'm saying, is, you know, like little league teams get all these sponsors, maybe you get some for the rec, I don't know.
You might, but, you're, you're talking about equipment stuff, you're not talking about someone throwing in.
No, no, no.
Well, she got stuff from Dick's Sporting Goods, she got, she, she was able to get stuff from there, but she put in.
Fucking proud of it.
Yeah.
And the rec director is celebrating year-round for the rest of the town.
Right, but she, she knows how to get things going so that, to get, because she also put in for Coffee with the Seniors for three hundred.
Alright, what else do you, that you'd like to discuss?
Um, so.
We should discuss.
I'm not opposed to giving something to this, I just, I, I, I really would like to see some sort of a plan on something, I mean. But you're not just flying without a plane.
Okay, well, I'll ask her to come in on Monday, that's good.
The one thing, the, the one thing the rec department, and it's been stressed for the last, it's been stressed for at least, and it's. I don't know if it's the ti- times nowadays, but they do need some help with volunteers. I mean, they have.
I agree with that.
Three or four people.
Right.
I agree with that.
Is that Lynn Bower still?
She, she, uh, she helps, like, she volunteers up a little bit and take the minutes.
I would think she would be a wonderful person to come up with a plan.
Yeah, you know what? Well. Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with you. I think, I know.
She, she, she's, uh.
She was a good teacher, I think if she could communicate well with Cecilia, and she could maybe.
I think Cecilia, hey, I, I, I could do this. I think Cecilia needs a little guidance, is what I'm trying to say.
Yep.
She gets a different place.
Well, and that's why I.
Why did you ask Lynn?
That's why, I know, that's why I reached out to Kelly Anderson, were you here for that conversation?
Yeah, Kelly is kind of like, well, just for information, not to, like, volunteer, I think, because Kelly, I think, is done with that.
Too hot end.
No, no, I didn't think.
She's got a lot, she's got a lot of experience.
No, I just think she's, she's gone through somebody kids helping out, it's like, okay, I'm, I'm done with that. But I could.
Oh, you think she's very tough?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Why, you're trying to see if she wants to get back involved?
Well, I just think that she has a lot of great experience, you know, um, she's very active.
Oh, you mean the student?
Um, well, to help guide the program.
Oh, she would be great for that.
Yeah.
I agree, it's just that she, if, you know, it's, she also has five kids, so to get her to volunteer.
Well, some are grown up now.
I know, ones in college are ready for growing up.
Uh, Rhea is.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so right now, with the change from, to the last time, um, we've met and went through them.
Yep.
With the adjustments for George, um, and, um, Mark.
Yep.
And not including the rec director at this point, which was in there for thirteen thousand. Brings us to, um, an increase in the proposed budget of thirty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Which is?
One point three six percent increase on the operating budget from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
If you added seven grand into the rec director, what would it take? Just probably something like that.
Forty thousand.
I'm only got, I just didn't know the percentage.
Oh, that brings us to one point six four. Or two million five hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars.
So what's acceptable?
Well, so she had asked for thirteen for that line.
Yeah.
And I think at the very bottom, I have, oh, I, actually, I can tell you what they were. Um, I have the focus numbers. So at, well, no, even at the low end, um, ten hours a week, fifteen dollars an hour. Um, with taxes, uh, is eighty, almost eighty-four hundred dollars. I don't think you're gonna need a rec director for fifteen dollars an hour. I think that, at a minimum, it would have to be eighteen. For ten hours a week, um, is ten thousand seventy-six dollars. At, um, twenty dollars an hour for ten hours is eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So is one point six good or bad?
It's good. It's good.
And that would be acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, a lot.
I was only for one, but I'm not complaining, I mean, it's just.
Well, when you kind of look at how everything's going.
Oh, I know.
I mean, inflation costs and everything, I mean, we're gonna get hit by that.
Yeah, I mean, we can deal with this right now, for sure, and then we might be something else.
That's, that's, all I'm thinking is, you know, I, I don't know whether it's acceptable or not acceptable, but. If it's within range.
It's acceptable, but then you'd consider reduced revenue as well.
Yeah, we all agree that side.
So, reduced revenue, part of it, a very small percent of it, is that the. The hotel mail tax went from eight percent down to seven point five percent, so that's a point five percent for all towns across the state, which would have been a small amount. You know, what else, do we, know what else we lost in revenue?
Yep.
Um, so.
I bet you it's because of town hall was closed.
Um, well, definitely motor vehicles is down, it was, um, proposed at six fifty-five, um, six hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, we're at four hundred and forty-nine thousand, almost four hundred and fifty thousand.
That's quite a bit.
It's a lot.
That's, that's where the.
That's a bulk of it.
That's the bulk part too, okay.
People have hard times buying new cars.
Well, they can't.
They're buying cars like crazy. Uh, my, my significant other is in the car business, and it's crazy.
They buy it, use.
Buy anything that's there, but they're not there.
They're just not registering them. Um, and then, let's see, building permits is down by about nine thousand. Other licensing and fees, which is made up of, um, all kinds of things.
So building permits being down, it's something, again, I'm just talking off a coffee, but. I have a concern, it's been a concern for a while, it's been addressed, that there's a percentage of people.
Who can't get them?
No, you see, like, work done.
No permit.
And there was never a problem, and then it's, it's.
I think it's happening a lot.
It's an after the fact, like, I know. I don't know for Saker, we should probably talk to Tom, I don't want, I don't want to imply Tom's not doing his job, but. I know there's probably two or three, two or three pieces of property in town halls from last year that got serious renovations, and I don't think they ever went to the plan.
Mm-mm.
And that's revenue for the town.
Yeah, it is.
So I think, while I'm thinking about this and stuff, I think I'd like to, you know, talk to Tom.
I think we should.
And find out what, and find out.
I actually take that back, it isn't, rather, I, we're not down, um, three, fifty thousand in revenue. We're down more like three hundred thousand in revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Because we had anticipated revenue of one point two five six million, and year-to-date is nine hundred and two.
Yeah, because he, just, Jack said, just the number you talked about, between the six seventy-five and the four something, would have been two hundred and all.
Right.
Um, but next year's anticipated revenue is down by fifty thousand.
That's what Caroline gave it? Who gave you that?
Mm-hmm, this was Caroline's, um, spreadsheet that she managed, the estimated revenue.
So revenue, revenue we can get from, you know, automobiles and stuff, revenue we obviously get from businesses. You know, again, thinking outside the box, at some point, I'm on the planning board now, but that's something that's added, that we should really work, work on.
Economic development?
Master plan and economic development, it really.
It's on our list.
We have a little bit of room out there. Uh, no, I know it is, I know, but some more revenue coming into the town would be.
Yeah, agreed.
Nice.
Well, Sonny came up with a good idea, that we ought to look at solar panels, and put them in the wetlands.
Can you do that?
I don't know.
Oh, I beg to differ.
In the wetlands?
They put them in, in Hampton Farms, right in the marsh.
Huh, I don't know, I, I, I didn't, I haven't had time to look at it.
Maybe federal government gives, you know, different, if you try to put a house out there, there's no way.
No.
Maybe the federal government gives special.
I don't know, I, it's.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I do have someone for you to talk with.
Okay. You know, and I can, I can reach out, I'm curious, like, I'll just give you a, for instance, well, actually, there's three or four people residents in town.
Yeah.
Linda McGavin, Rob, Judge Roberts, and there's another house out there, can't think of who it is right now. All have big, all have big panels out there. Uh, my neighbor across the street, I'm wondering how much they get as a kickback.
Yeah.
From the power company.
Power companies are doing that all the time, though. If you got land, they'll put them out there.
Well, I was flying home from, uh.
San Diego?
San Diego, I flew, they show you the route you're flying, and I was just past the UMA, Yama Desert. There's a, there's a solar panel found, that it must go.
Miles.
Fifty miles.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I mean, I'm at thirty thousand feet, and all you see is this huge mirror.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so we're done here?
Um, yes.
Okay, alright, so I'll, um, firm up these numbers, um, and I will.
When is the next budget, next Wednesday again?
Monday?
No, the next budget.
Yeah, oh, budget.
Wednesday.
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 Um, so it would be nice if we could get Celia and Sarah in here, to maybe try to finalize something for that renewal.
That'd be great.
Yep.
We can do that, that'd be good. Let's do it Monday. The other thing I think we need to speak about Monday is MRI.
Yes.
Yep.
What are we doing with that?
Uh, Mike's coming in on Monday. Yep, he's coming in.
So we already signed him up?
I signed the document, did you?
The other thing, I, I don't think.
Did you both sign the document, because I noticed it's gone?
Yeah, that was the other, that was last week. Oh, wait, I came in, that's right, I came in Tuesday, so my days are all screwed up, I didn't work Monday, I ended up getting home at like four in the morning, because I took Tuesday off, so I'm thinking today's like Tuesday, so I forgot it.
So if you guys both sign the document or the contract.
Yep, um.
I just didn't know that they had signed it.
Oh, he sent us a copy back, no, but.
That's what I meant.
Alright, so did you guys make a motion to start? Start it officially, so we did. The way they come up with doing.
And make motion to return?
Well, we are done, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, there's a bunch of stuff in here that needs our.